I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order on Tuesday, oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, seven thirty P.M. in the Twinsburg Government Center. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Seresi?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Okay, please join us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Fury.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us and planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so that we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I need approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of December tenth, two thousand thirteen. Are there any changes or corrections?
Nope, none here.
Okay, approval? Say aye. Okay, they'll stand as written. At this time I'd like to make a presentation to Seth Roden for his service as president of Twinsburg City Council for the year two thousand thirteen. So Seth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Yeah. Thank you. Everything you've ever seen here.
Shannon, was there any other, there weren't any other audience or awards?
There aren't.
All right. Any audience participation?
We do have audience participation. First Sheila Williams.
Before we begin, I'd like for Mr. Scafidi to read our procedures for public participation and for those planning to speak, just out of respect, if you could please adhere to these procedures, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, we will have no more than three persons speak on one specific issue if other issues are listed on the sign and sheet. Persons will speak on an issue that they state on the sheet. Persons granted the floor shall address their remarks to the President of Council and shall not engage council members or other officers of the city to debate. Ty raids are not permitted, nor shall any person utter any profane, derogatory, contemptuous, slanderous, harassing, mean-spirited, malicious, or false comments or remarks. The presiding office shall limit to five minutes the time permitted any speaker to address council. No person shall address council more than once at the same meeting. Members of council may respond during the audience participation only by leave of the President of Council. Audience participation will not exceed one half hour.
Boy, I feel like that was a setup, but yeah. Well, I had two things. I listed the Summit County Public Health Department. We're moving along, we're moving to a new building, we're taking bids. Half of the staff is there already and it's on Market Street across from what is behind the first Acme store, for people that are familiar with the Akron area. And most of the building is vacant with the previous tenants. I think we're down to one tenant now, so I'm just trying to keep you updated as to what's going on with that. And as we get closer towards a grand opening, I'm sure that you'll be invited and we can let council and everyone else know. But it's moving along and it's kind of exciting because everything is going to be housed under one roof and they've been working to bring all of the municipalities together with the programs under one roof for the last two, three years and it's worked out very well. So that's what I put on my paper. Then I wanted to say that I paid my Rita tax yesterday and I know that we repealed the quarter percent and I wanted to thank council for keeping their word because that was something that has been going back and forth. And I also want to thank the finance director and council and the mayor for the stability that our community has continued to have the last three, four years because a lot of communities are suffering. And I sold my home, as many of you know, and my biggest obstacle has been I want to stay in Twinsburg because we are a solid community. So I just wanted to give kudos to all of you for that and to congratulate you, I'm so happy for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Next? Next, we have Peter Hale.
Peter Hale, one-one-four-three-seven Ravenna Road, Twinsburg. An official appeal has been filed against the A.R.B. decision to reverse their opinion and grant the city a certificate of appropriateness as it is apparent proper legal procedures have not been followed by City Hall. I'm glad to say the city has notified me this afternoon and that our appeal will now be scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-first, at eight-thirty P.M. While this started as a mission to save the old school, it is now much more than that. It is more than a brick and mortar building, it is about the brick and mortar of our law. If the law had been followed, we would not even be here. All we have ever wanted is for the city to follow the law as they should. I was reminded by Mr. Finch at one point that I am not a lawyer and what I felt was an effort to discount my credibility. No, I'm not a lawyer, but I am a member of a great community in a great country that was founded on the principle that we, the people, are the government. I am also a professional photographer and construction project superintendent and project manager. I know when someone is trying to ignore the codes and manipulate information. We need no intercessor, we are protected by our constitution against interference with the right to peaceably assemble or from anyone having the ability to prohibit our petitioning the government for redress of grievances. Yet we are challenged as being disloyal for doing exactly that. This is the abbreviated law we expect to be upheld directly from the city's website, eleven-seventy point oh-seven, Administrative Procedures. Upon receipt of an applicant for, application for a permit, the building commissioner shall promptly transmit the application to the A.R.B. as set forth in eleven-seventy point oh-three. No record of this exists. All applicants shall complete a demolition permit application which consists of certified signature of property owner, a demolition site plan drawn to appropriate scale. No record of a demolition site plan exists. Site restoration plan must illustrate lot changes. The site plan must be supported with description of demolition timeline, measures to be taken to protect adjacent properties, and anticipated reuse of the property. These documents do not exist. Further, if the very foundation of our charter had been adhered to, these steps, which have been totally ignored anyway, would be moot. Eleven-seventy intent clearly states, "It is the purpose and intent of these regulations to maintain and enhance the distinctive historic character of Twinsburg. It is an intent of these regulations to achieve, among others, the following related objectives: to safeguard the heritage of Twinsburg by preserving structures and sites which reflect periods and events in the history of the community." There is no building more unique in Twinsburg. These, as all laws, are to be kept from the most intrusive to least intrusive according to the city charter, yet the city has to this point focused on the minutiae and not the intent. No further investigation into demolition would be done if these simple chapters were adhered to. Chapter eleven-seventy and thirteen-forty-nine were not followed, chapter thirteen-forty-nine being only three years old and approved by most of the sitting council. There are too many protocol failures to mention here, but here's a further sampling. Quote, "The school would have just have more specialty shops, we don't need any more of that." Yet the conceptual plan calls for mixed juice with thirty percent of retail space. That is strip mall space that we don't need. The city plans to tear down the school but say they have no plan for development-
One minute.
...as the charter states they should, yet when pressed, they point to the conceptual plan, which is no plan at all but an artist's rendering. The city has paid sixty thousand dollars to lawyers representing the people of Twinsburg as well as an undisclosed sum for three attorneys to defend their actions. The people have fought for their right to vote and won. This money could have paid for a lot of repairs to the old school.
Okay, Shannon, anyone else?
Yes. Sally Gadasch?
Thank you, I'm Sally Gadasch, ninety-two fifty Liberty Road. I'm so pleased that you're so precise about the laws that apply to us. We get so many minutes to stand here and state our case and yet when we ask you to follow our laws, it's a struggle. And as Peter just said, these laws were brought to the A.R.B.'s attention time after time. This isn't the first time they've been noted. We've asked for site plans, we've asked for plans, nothing. So it isn't something that just happened tonight that this is bringing, being brought to the attention of the government. We've brought these things' attention to your government August, September, October, November, and finally in December. And now we've come to zero hour and we're bringing them to your attention. And they have to be adhered to because they're your laws, you passed them. As Peter said, thirteen-forty-nine was passed by every one of you. It's a demolition law. It says you must have an application and before you can even consider anything, you have to review that application. And today I've been asking for information and today I was informed, there is no application for anything on the old school, nothing. There is no application, there is no permit, it's been accepted or denied. These are violations of the laws that you made. You made them on our behalf. So I would just want to make that mention that there's so many issues being brought about this, that these people were not nice and that they were this. When you get an emotional situation like this, you're going to have people who are going to say things, you know, I don't like mobs. I'm one person, I don't want to be responsible for a mob, I'll be responsible for myself. But so many times, and this becomes into a mob situation, you do get things that are being said. And to be told that you didn't come to a plan or tell us what you wanted, there's no law that says we have to. You come to us and tell us what your plan is, you tell us the cost of that plan and then we'll decide if we want to address it. So please try to understand, this is not a debate or a fight between the people and city council. We have been violating our laws for years. Twelve years we've been in court, five times, four times the judges ruled against you. You've denied us our right to participate in our government. It's called abuse of power. So try to understand, this is exactly what we're trying to get, our government back into our hands. I love the fact that you've got a Charter Review Commission coming up and I hear there are like fifteen, sixteen people that have applied. Wonderful. Where have these people been over the last twelve years? If they care for our charter and our government, this is the time to address it, not to turn it upside down to satisfy, our charter is written for us, our people. It's not written to satisfy the government's needs. Simple. abide by the charter, abide by the zoning codes, you won't have any problems. And Mr. Fury, I understand you had something you were going to tell me about eleven-forty-eight-twenty. This is not probably the best time to discuss it, if you want. I would just refer to you that if you're talking about ordinance sixty-nine that we voted for-
They don't have the paperwork in front of me.
No, I know that and I don't expect you to talk to me now. But when you review that, check ordinance sixty-nine. It goes from eleven, it goes from eleven-sixty-nine or eleven-sixty-one down to eleven-nineteen. You're talking about eleven-forty-eight-twenty. That was adopted by council in April on ordinance thirty-three. Never voted by the people, never had a public hearing-
One minute.
And you, at that point, you put in twenty and twenty-one. And three months later, you ask us to vote and you only ask us to vote for up to nineteen. And then you were said repeal anything in conflict. So I say we repealed eleven-forty-eight-twenty that you adopted without our vote and without a public hearing. So if you want to review that, you review that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have any more?
There is none.
Okay.
I would like to comment here. With all due respect to Mr. Hale and Mrs. Gadasch, there is no application for demolition exactly because, while you stated, we are following the law. First of all, we had to apply for a certificate of appropriateness from the A.R.B., which is what we did. We applied for that certificate of appropriateness, we worked with the A.R.B., we went through negotiation period, and just obtained that. We are not even finished with our environmental phase-two on the building. How can we demo something when we haven't completed environmental phase-two on the structure itself? They're checking for asbestos, the fuel tanks. After that is completed and after we have a development plan, we will move to the next step, which is an application for demolition. Totally agree with you. Those are our laws and they will be followed. Thank you.
Mrs. Gadasch, she has the floor.
Be respectful, please. Any other comments? Okay, next we'll move on to council communications and committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Yeah, none of my committees have met. Planning Commission is set to meet on January twenty-seventh. I haven't been informed yet whether that meeting will go forward. The last couple have been canceled due to lack of items on the agenda. But the Community Relations Board and Parks Board have not met this year and that's the end of my report.
Mr. Roden?
None of my committees have met as well. Thank you.
Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, Happy New Year to everybody. It's nice to be back here conducting city business again for the year two thousand fourteen. I look forward to a good year. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on December seventeenth and there were two appeals that came before the board. They were Appeal Number Twelve and Appeal Number Eleven came before the board. Appeal Number Twelve was a variance of five-point-seven-foot variance for a driveway on Liberty Road which was for the Metro Park serving Summit County. They were looking for that variance for their property. It had to be ten feet from any adjacent lot line. So the board unanimously approved that variance for them, again, five-point-seven feet. The other appeal was Appeal Number Eleven, which was heard at the previous meeting before this one and this was with regards to a fence on Darian Lane. Residents came in, they wanted a variance for a one-and-five-eighths-inch spacing on a fence requirement. So the board at the previous meeting decided that they would go out there and take a look at the fence in the area and then they would make their decision on the seventeenth. At this meeting, the board also, again, unanimously approved the variance for these residents. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the thirty-day waiting period on both Appeal Number Twelve, twenty thirteen, and Appeal Number Eleven, twenty thirteen.
A second. Anybody have any questions?
Shannon, call roll. Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Seresi?
Yes.
That was the end of that meeting. They have not scheduled their next meeting yet. There are no appeals coming up before the BZA. Other than that, we had a finance committee meeting this evening. Mr. Seresi is the chairman, so I'm sure he'll talk on that and I have no further report. Thank you.
Thank you. My committees did not meet. Mr. Fury?
Thank you and good evening. I did attend the Board of Zoning, excuse me, the Architectural Review Board meeting on December twelfth and was part of negotiation to get the certificate of appropriateness. I also attended the Finance Committee as a member this evening. The committee that, the redistricting committee will also be including the Charter Review, there'll be a redistricting committee this year and we're doing interviews for those positions next week, so as that forms, we'll move forward with that. And just an announcement, I would like to congratulate Mr. Seresi for being elected as president of this year's Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seresi?
Thank you. The Twins Day Committee met last Wednesday and the specific intent of the meeting was to discuss possible changes in the parade and setup for the parade and staging for the parade. Chief Noga was there, was very helpful in directing the conversation because there are things we can do and not do as far as close down streets and change directions and things like that. So it was a very important meeting and it was a good result. I think we were making some changes that are going to make the parade more efficient and much more safer, for sure. The Finance Committee met earlier and Ms. House is going to address in a little bit the major topics that she spoke about with us in terms of the review of two thousand thirteen and projections for two thousand fourteen. And we did set up our next Finance Committee meeting for January twenty-eighth, which is just before our next council meeting, and we will be meeting at six o'clock. I did want to mention that I was responsible this evening in that committee for taping the meeting for the minutes and I missed turning on a switch. So I don't know how we're going to recap that, but we're going to have to come up with something. But I know we have all the information that we discussed, but that was my error and I apologize. I missed, like I said, I missed turning on a switch. Charter Review Commission has not met and the Safety Committee has not met. I'm sure we'll be doing that soon, as soon as we select the members of that Charter Review Committee, we'll no doubt be meeting right away and getting on, looking at the charter. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Yes, good evening. The Architectural Review Board met January second and it had one item on the agenda. It was a replacement sign face for eighty-one-eight-one Darrell Road and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scafidi?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know, I'd be remiss to mention, these are new committees for us this year and so I am on the Chamber of Commerce, I'm the representative to the Chamber of Commerce. And so today I attended one of the first of the meetings of this year and that was a ribbon cutting of a new business in our community. That was Anthony's Men's Salon and Barber Shop on Creekside, next to Brewster's in that little strip center there. And so I attended the ribbon cutting today and it was very well attended. The mayor was there, Councilman Seresi was there. I got a new haircut today. But it's a very nice, it's a very nice salon, barber shop and salon, so I think if anybody's looking for somewhere to go, this would be the place that they might want to go and really try to patronize our city of Twinsburg businesses because, once again, we have another nice business in town and it'd be nice to keep these folks going. So that's it. And again, I'm sorry for having it come back to me, but I did forget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Stauffer. Good evening, everyone. This is official, our fire chief, Chief Racine, is formally retired. His last day was on January third, so we wish him well in his retirement. As you know, he was with the department, with the city of Twinsburg for over forty years. So congratulations to him, his family, and we wish him a lot of fun and a lot of health and happiness during their retirement years. We are currently in the selection process for a new chief, so we are almost completed with that. An appointment should be finished by the end of January. So we're very, very excited to have a new fire chief in place very shortly. So again, congratulations to Chief Racine. He had a really wonderful occasion yesterday and an explicit honor to swear in the first Assistant Chief of the Twinsburg Police Department. Lieutenant Robert Goncheski was promoted to Assistant Chief and we're very, very excited. This is going to be, I believe, a great opportunity for the department. It will allow for a lot of upward mobility in the department and a lot of opportunity for advancement. He's a great administrator and leader, so again, very excited about having Lieutenant Goncheski as the new Assistant Chief. And he started his duties immediately. He was hired by the city in nineteen ninety, was promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and six, to Lieutenant in two thousand nine. He was our first K-nine handler. He also participated in the DARE program and was a school resource officer at Dodge Middle, or Chamberlain Middle School. So congratulations to Lieutenant Goncheski on his promotion. I would, we have lots of congratulations today. We have the Business Person of the Year, Carolyn Lookabil. And she was selected by the Chamber of Commerce. She was recognized at a luncheon in December. She brings more than thirty-five years of healthcare operations and experience at the local, regional, and corporate levels of management. She has served as a CEO, Regional Manager, and Regional Director of Operations for Adult Living and Rehabilitation Providers. And Carolyn is currently the Vice President, COO for Richter Healthcare Consultants in Twinsburg, Ohio. And she is just a dynamo, gets involved in everything and she has a big heart and a great heart and a great passion for people. So congratulations, Carolyn, and we look forward to working with you more in two thousand fourteen. Would also like to recognize some of our officers, Officer Fido, Officer Sawyer, and Officer Swope. The chief has nominated them for the Red Cross Hero Award through the American Red Cross of Summit and Portage Counties. And they responded to a call on four-eighty, they found an unresponsive passenger and was able to remove the passenger from the car, started CPR. I believe that was actually Officer Fido that did that part and the other officers, of course, assisted. So congratulations to all of them. That's what our safety forces are about and they do wonderful work here in the city of Twinsburg and we certainly appreciate it. So congratulations, Officers Fido, Sawyer, and Swope. We also had a retirement, Tammy DePue retired and that was, well, it was official at the end of December, but she was thirty years with the city of Twinsburg and served under, I believe, four police chiefs?
Maybe five.
Maybe five. So congratulations to Tammy and again, we wish her a lot of fun and health and happiness in her retirement. I'd also like to recognize a local, not a resident, but he's a local businessman and I'm sure you all know him, Guy Gentili. This is pretty amazing. If you know Guy, he's a very energetic person and he has not missed a day of walking in eighteen years. He has walked two miles a day for six thousand five hundred and seventy-five consecutive days. They just did an article about him in the Fort Myers News because that's where he is for the winter months and, which offers a lot of opportunity for him to continue walking, but he's walked through hurricane gusts and rain and snow and while he was ill and had knee problems, but he keeps trucking along and congratulations to him. I believe Guy is seventy, yes, he's seventy-seven years old and by his count, he has walked thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty miles. So congratulations to Guy Gentili. Again, another local businessman. I would like to thank Sheila Williams here tonight and it was very opportune that you were here this evening. Sheila Williams is our representative from the city to the Summit County Public Health District and we really appreciate the feedback that we get from Sheila. They are running some great programs right now that you may not be aware of. If you own a home with old flaking lead paint on the siding, doors, windows, floors, and/or porches and you have a baby on the way or a pregnant woman in the house, you can get a grant, a hazard grant program and it's offered to Summit County Public Health for removal of this lead paint. So if the home is nineteen-seventy-eight or older, has lead paint and you have those conditions, you can reach Summit County Public Health and they'll be, they will assist you in being able to get rid of that lead paint in your house. They also have another program, which is a free radon test kit. Again, you can either go over to the Building Department, we have these nice little forms, you can fill out a form, it'll be sent in to Summit County Public Health Department and you can get a free radon test kit. I think they have some limited supplies on those, but a good addition to your household for safety, again, from the Summit County Public Health Department. I would like to thank Waste Management. You know, this was really a horrendous snow, not so, not so much even the snow event, but the cold temperature event that we had a week ago. Basically, it was, I believe, the sixth, seventh, and eighth of January and we got down to minus thirteen degrees and the windshield factor was much worse than that. And nevertheless, these workers for Waste Management got out and picked up our trash. Recycles were delayed a week, but the trash was picked up, you know, and they missed some spots, they came back and they got it. But I just would like to remind our residents that it's not a truck that picks up the trash. You know, it's, it's, it's a person that goes out there in that cold weather, somebody's husband, father, brother, whatever, in that cold weather and braves the elements and picks up that trash. They did the best they can and I think they did a really, really good job and I would like to thank them for their efforts because I know there were a lot of towns around this area that had no trash collection last week. And ours may have taken a little bit longer because of the cold conditions, but they got it done. So thank you, Waste Management, and thank you to all those men, women who are out there picking up that trash during that, those horrendous conditions. Also, we sent out a message about the delay in trash, trash collection and also about the delay in the recycling and it went out through our Twinsburg Connect System. There were- There were, let me look here, there were 8,529 calls that we sent out, 63% delivery rate. So 5,378 homes or businesses received the message. There were 82, 82% of the emails were received, or 337 sent out by email, 277 were actually opened and received. And text messages, about 238 of our residents received text messages. 68% recovery on that, about 162 received their text messages and actually read them. So if you're interested in getting any kind of information on road closures, perhaps a boil alert, bad weather, again, this kind of thing, delay in trash collection or branch pickup, sign up for Twinsburg Connect. You can go on our website, it's on the front page, and there's a link that will take you to it. You can sign up for Twinsburg Connect. You can receive the messages any way you want to, landline, cell phone, text message, email, and that way you can stay informed. We're really trying, we, we had a big kind of push on it when we first did this a couple of years ago, maybe a little more than a year ago, and we're trying to get another good push out. So tell your friends, your relatives, your neighbors, that there's a way to get messages here and keep connected to the city of Twinsburg. And again, you can go through our website to get that. One other thing, if, if you use the Metro system, there will be new schedules going into effect on Tuesday, January 21st, so that's coming up a little bit later in the month. Please check the bus schedules, go to their website, and check out what bus you're riding, and I hate for you to miss a bus or stand out there in the cold waiting for one. So again, check the Metro schedules, they'll be changing January 21st. And since it's the beginning of the year, I would like to encourage our seniors to sign up at our Senior Center. It's a tremendously active center, and this is the brochure they put out once a month called Newsflash. They have a Valentine's brunch and party coming up. And some of the trips for 2014, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat at Playhouse Square, the Horseshoe Casino, and Cleveland Orchestra matinee. So there's something for everybody. I hope you will enjoy it. They play Uker, Pinochle, Mahjong, Bridge, lots of things to do, line dancing, exercise. So please contact Laura Seifer at our Senior Center, and she'll be happy to bring you in for a little tour and introduce you to other seniors, and I think it's a great way to get active and involved in the community. We had a wonderful, I know this is a little long tonight, but we had quite a few-week break here and lots of messages and lots of things going on, so just bear with me. But I wanted to read this because this came in to me and to the staff here at City Hall. "We want to thank everyone for taking such good care of us with all of your great services. Bless the workers who keep our streets and driveways plowed." And again, our staff really appreciates that, because there's some horrendous conditions that they work in during the winter, so thank you to all of them. Our engineering inspectors, I know it's really cold and, and conditions aren't that great when they're out there watching over some of the jobs that are going on. Three-Chamber Woman Expo is taking place Thursday, January 30th, 4 o'clock to 7:00 PM at the Hilton Garden Inn. This is a chamber event, and there will be more than 50 booths featuring goods and services for women, including salons, beauty consultants, fitness centers, health and wellness practitioners, clothing boutiques, travel agencies, financial services, and charitable organizations. So New Year, New You, Thursday, January 30th, a three-chamber Women's Expo at the Hilton Garden Inn. And the last thing I have came from Governor, Governor John Kasich from the state of Ohio, and he sent a recognition, a proclamation, for our Portage Summit Collaboration Group. We have been working together for Summit County, Portage County, for two years now on some regional initiatives, and we're very proud that the group has stayed together. We, in fact, the numbers are always increasing in communities who are interested and working together in sharing equipment, projects, keeping our costs down. I'd like to thank Mayor Glenn Broska from Streetsboro. It was really his idea to form this organization, and it has blossomed, we're doing a great job, and coming up with new ideas and new projects all the time. So it was nice of Governor John Kasich and Mary Taylor, our Lieutenant Governor, to recognize that group on their second anniversary. So we appreciate that. And those are all the reports I have this evening, but we have two quick Department Head reports. Karen House, Finance Director.
Happy New Year, everyone. We had a very productive, good, energetic Finance Committee meeting first year, and we talked about the 2014 estimated revenue projections, which are still throughout the year, will be subject to change, though, but we got a good handle on the projections, a combination with what Regional Income Tax Agency had projected. And due to the rescinding of the quarter percent they are projecting, that will estimate losing about $3.1 million for 2014 and some other factors. We also talked about the estimated revenue against the temporary, and the Department Heads, I do want to thank them for their diligent hard work and continue to work on their permanent proposed appropriations for 2014. We do plan to have the proposed permanent appropriations before council, the first meeting in February. Also, I am happy to report that the Finance Department is moving along and finally getting the completion of the installation of Visual Intelligence Portfolio software system. It is very advanced, we really love the projection of how the reports are looking, the new accounting structure is going very well, we have tested and balanced, and we had training all day today, and we also will have training for the Department Heads and the end users next week. So that's committed on the 22nd. And again, I just want to thank the Department Heads for their continued effort and hard work and understanding as we make this transition to this new software system. We did receive our final, and I did forward that all to you, our final distribution for 2013, as far as our income tax collections, and, just a minute. For December 2013, we received $2,082,380 compared to December last year, $1,003,003. This reflects an increase of 56.98% or $755,822. Refunds are reflective in the December collections, the total refund is $20,000. Total year-to-date receipts collected for the 2013 year is $25,058,791 compared to last year, $23,148,257. And that is an increase reflective at 8.25% or 1.9. The net cash distribution applied due to the quarter percent change was $276,231. As a result of the quarter percent rate increase to the city's income tax effective 2010, the city of Twinsburg did collect an additional $3.5 million this year, or last year, compared to last year, city received 3.2 additional dollars as a result of the increase. This reflects an increase of 10.93 more over last year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Karen. Chris Campbell, Public Works.
Good evening, Council. It has been a pretty tough winter for us as well with the, all the snow and the cold. Through the end of December, the Service Department responded to 12 snow and ice events. They've applied 3,500 tons of salt, 19,000 gallons of brine, which is something fairly new for us, we started that last year. But the, the brine is something we put down prior to the event, and it's, it's, it's added a real, real nice part to that program that kind of takes care of a lot of that early ice that forms on the roadways, allows the drivers to get out there and get their routes covered. So brine has been a good addition, we'll continue on with that. Between the events, we're back on the potholes. Last year, we, we patched over 2,800 potholes, they're back out there right now doing that. Kind of related to that, State Route 82 up across from the Chrysler Plant, we had a Cleveland Water project, there was a, there was a dig that Cleveland Water did. We were finally able to get that temporarily patched, put some concrete in there, so that, that right-hand lane is, is open. We will finalize repairs in the spring when we can get the hot mix asphalt for that. So that, that is good news, that was, that was down for a while. Also, in December, we finished up the leaf pickup and the branch pickup programs. Currently, we have the Christmas tree recycling that we're doing at the golf course, so there's a, there's a nice area set up. They've actually filled it one time, and they've had to chip those trees up already. I think there's over 80 trees, so that, that area will probably stay active till the end of January. Also, in the month of December, we, we performed the 11th round of trouble spot of the stormwater system inspection and cleaning, so that was completed for the year. Had no major issues with stormwater this year. Right before the meeting, I did get a call from Waste Management, that was around, a little bit after 7:00. Because of the increased volume in recyclables, they worked till 7:00 tonight. They were not able to get the areas Twin Hills, Lawn Field, the east side of Ravenna Road, Down By, and including Mallard Cove. So they'll be out tomorrow morning to finish getting all those recyclables. But they actually, actually had extra crews on the road today because they did anticipate the extra recycling, so, but they did get that, the, the majority of that picked up, so they'll, they'll finish that in the morning. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That's all we have this evening.
Okay, next, we'll move on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 153, 2013.
We're going to pass over.
Do you read that, or are we passing, we're passing over this?
Passed over.
Yes, we're passing over that.
After that, we have Resolution 01, 2014.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Legal Defenders Office of Summit County, Ohio, to provide representation for indigent defendants.
Next is Ordinance 02, 2014.
That's a resolution we have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. What's that? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 01, 2014.
I'll second.
Okay. Shannon, we call the roll, please?
Mrs.
Oh, discussion now, discussion, any discussion on this?
This is an annual contract that we do to provide legal representation to people who can't afford it. Do this every year with the county, and it's just a formality at this point.
Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. Is it a, this is not, I'm sorry.
It passed 7-0.
Passes 7-0, thank you. Okay, next is Ordinance 02, 2014.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Great Lakes Crushing LTD., 30831 Euclid Avenue, Willowick, Ohio, 44092, for the Westwood Drive improvements and declaring an emergency.
Is this for Westwood?
Okay, I'd like a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 2000, or 02, 2014, and place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Do we need a discussion on the emergency?
Yeah, the reason for the emergency is that we'd like to get this contract awarded so the contractor could order their supplies and materials and try to begin construction in March of this year.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency clause passes 7-0. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2, 02, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Sorese. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. This is Westwood Drive, which is in the Glenwood Acres area. It's one of the streets with the transite water line on it, and another one of the streets that we're going to be replacing that transite, transite pipeline. In addition, there will be some storm and sanitary sewer work, as well as pavement work once the project's completed. This falls in line with the, our goal of trying to get to each and every street in Glenwood Acres and replace the transite pipe. We will be starting hopefully in March of this year, Westwood, and we will be applying for funding for a 0% 30-year loan for Hillsdale for next year, for hopefully 15, we could do that project. And then we've got a few areas on Oakwood that we need to do yet, and then on Door Ridge we need to complete. So, and then that would complete all of Glenwood Acres, and all the transite pipe will be replaced per the residence request. We've had some, I guess, some pretty long discussions in the past over that. So, you know, we, we've set a goal, and it looks like right now we're on target to, to complete that goal. This year's project is 1.8 million, and we do have a 0% 30-year loan from OPWC in the amount of $690,000. So that'll be paying for, we'll be getting that money for a portion of it in, by way of a loan for a 30-year, 0% loan. Other than that, that's it.
Well, thank you.
I'm just glad that we're going to be moving forward.
Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
After the executive session, will we convene and report?